I call this January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen Selectment Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have is the approval of the minutes of the November twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen Special Joint Meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the Special Joint Meeting Minutes of November twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion's been made. Does anyone have any?
Tim had a second.
Oh, Tim had a second.
Yeah.
Any questions? Discussion? No? All those in favor? The approval of the minutes of the December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen Special Joint Meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Special Joint Meeting Minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor. Okay. Approval of minutes of December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen Regular Meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the Meeting Minutes of December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor. Okay. It's past the hour seven PM. Fire Chief David Parente swearing in of Ionis Pinzopolis and Brian Hatch as firefighter paramedics.
Should've put Brian's name first. You're all tough. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. So I'm here before you today to introduce you to our two newest members of the Department and have them sworn in and have them have their badges of office pinned on them today. So gentlemen, why don't you come on up? Have a seat. Brian, you sit there. Yanni, you get to sit next to me. Aren't you lucky? So right to my left is, as you mentioned, Ionis Pinzopolis. We call him Yanni because it is much easier. Yanni comes to us by way of short stint in Maynard Fire as a COF firefighter. He has worked with Community EMS and Patriot Ambulance until he was appointed just last month. He actually has a week of seniority on Brian, so too bad for Brian. Yanni graduated in two thousand and four from North Rain High School and attended Salem State College where he received a degree in Elementary Education and American Studies in two thousand and eight. I guess he decided he wanted something different, so he went to school to become an ENT, and now he's actually in school to be a paramedic at QuinSig, and we expect him to graduate in May, right?
Right.
Very good. And then he'll be, Yanni will be attending the Fire Academy on July fifth, so a wonderful time to go to Stowe and hang out at the Fire Academy, July and August. He will have a very good time. Just on the other side is Brian Hatch. Brian currently works for Vital, or worked for Vital EMS, excuse me. He is a local boy. He graduated from Algonquin in two thousand and fifteen. He is currently attending QuinSig for his medic class. He is also one of our COF firefighters, so both Yanni and Brian were hired directly from our COF force, which is really nice because it allows us to bring personnel in, take a look at them, decide, do we want to keep them, do we not? And they end up being great hires, so we're very excited about them both. Brian still lives in Northborough, Yanni lives in Marlborough, and we're looking forward to having them both come on board.
Thank you.
So, members of the Board, here you go.
Well, welcome and thank you for choosing Northborough. So, Board Members. Jason?
I just want to thank you guys. Appreciate it. Certainly the Chief has very high standards for the people he brings into the Department, and it speaks well to you for your motivation to pursue the paramedic degrees and to come into Northborough. So, really appreciate it. Congratulations and welcome.
Leslie?
Yeah, congratulations and welcome as well. You have wonderful backgrounds, so we're always interested in having people who are educated, as you are, and interested and dedicated in our community and want to do what you want to do, and the fact that you would change your mind and take this path, I think, speaks so highly of that as well. Both of you have wonderful backgrounds, and I know Algonquin's a wonderful high school, and so you both have great backgrounds for us, and we really appreciate it. So, thank you for coming. And I see that there's some members of our department here as well this evening. If you could stand up and introduce yourselves.
Oh, go ahead, guys.
Captain Jamie Doesutel.
Yeah.
Captain Robtow.
Captain Fred Hurst.
Comic we asked by, uh, my buddy.
There's two more out there.
They're two more hiding out there. They're so shy.
Brian, Steve, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
It speaks well when they come and support their department, so I think it's nice to always see you guys here. Any other questions or answers? Tim?
Just congratulations and welcome to town and look forward to having you. Thank you.
Leslie?
Also, do we have some family members?
I was a little disappointed, Leslie.
I'm sorry.
Because I already warned them that you were going to be asking them.
Very important. So, if you have family members here who would like to introduce, that would be great.
So you can go first.
All right.
Do it on breath.
I'm going to go start that side. This is my wife in the front, Allison Hood, soon to be Allison Pinzopolis, just waiting for the paperwork. At the end is my mom Joanna, next there is my brother Anthony, my sister-in-law Carrie, I believe right next there is my father Saterios.
You can stand up.
Okay. My father Saterios, my father-in-law Jeff, my brother Dino, my mother-in-law Jerry, my brother's new fiance Julia, and my brother Saterios.
Wow, that's wonderful. Wow.
Brian?
That's my mother in the front row, Mary Ann, my dad, Michael, my middle brother Nicholas, and my youngest brother Matthew.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here.
At this point in time, I'd like to call on Town Clerk Andy Dowd. Swearing in process.
Yep. Let's go ahead and introduce.
Did he raise your right hand? I say your names.
For Brian Hatch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I say your names.
I am Pinzopolis.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and disbar.
Discharge and disbar.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As firefighter for the town of Northborough.
As firefighter for the town of Northborough.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
The bylaws of the town.
The bylaws of the town.
And the laws of this Commonwealth.
And the laws of this Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I say your names.
I am Pinzopolis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations.
So, Allison, light, is it?
Yep.
What a guest. I'm going to go ahead and put your new badges on.
That's nice.
And I told them you can't draw blood, so, though we have medics here, so fair enough. Congratulations. What you all mean, you all have to stage the whole meeting.
Congratulations.
No? 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 No, you can all work your way right out.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
I'll take it as a good thing.
Thank you very much.
It's not a politician.
Thank you very much.
As long as it's not the police slaughter.
Okay, that brings us to reports. Julianne?
Yes. Well, first of all, I would also like to congratulate the new firemen, but I'd also like to say that it's clear from both the Police Chief's report and the Fire Chief's report that their jobs run every, run from prevention to high-risk situations, and we're very grateful for that. So, I'd also like to thank the Town Administrators, planning, and school officials who helped to successfully achieve green community status for Northborough. I know it was a lot of work and will continue to be a lot of work, so thank you for all of your efforts. And I have one suggestion. Last month, we heard, we heard a letter read that was signed by one hundred and twenty-three residents of Northborough, offering some very thoughtful suggestions, and I don't know if we have all had time to study that letter and think about it, but I was wondering how we're going to move forward with discussing it.
I'll turn it over to John first.
Yeah, with the holidays and all the other workload, we haven't had a chance to go through that, but my intent is to go through the letter and provide a written response for the Board's consideration, and it's up to the Board to decide how to proceed.
So, that would involve our discussing it now, or we wait for your response?
No, I think, I think one of the things we want to look at is the accuracy of some of the things that was in the letter and make sure that we have the facts correct before we embark on a detailed discussion. I would hope that the Board would wait for us to put something together, and then, from there, you can decide what, if any, action is required.
Do you think that we could do that next meeting?
Well, my intention would be to have it, have a reply by your next meeting, yes.
Okay. And after the reply, then we will discuss if there's any items on there that we think need discussing.
Okay, all right.
They will become agenda items if we feel that they need to be discussed.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to understand that process, and I have nothing else.
Okay. Tim?
The only thing I have is I've received a couple of calls from parents around town about school buses and people passing school buses when the school buses are stopped with their stop signs up. I'm sure people understand how dangerous this, but I can't stress how dangerous this is to both parents and to children that are crossing the roads and getting on school buses every morning and every afternoon. I would ask all parents, if they do happen to see this, please write down license plates and please call the Police Department and report this. I know some people that have reported this, and the police do respond. If warranted, they do ticket people. It is a step offense, so if people do this repeatedly, it can move from a civil to criminal. So please, if you do see this, please take the time, write down license plates, and report it to the Police Department. Kids don't take safety as seriously as adults do. Our next-door neighbor gets off the bus and runs in the road, and if you're blowing through that stop sign, something really bad is going to happen. So please, if you see a school bus stop with the lights flashing, stop your car. If you see somebody that doesn't stop, please write down the license plate number and call the Police Department. That is it. Thanks, that's my report.
Chief, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, as Tim said, give us a call. We've had several instances that we found out about well after the fact because people posted on social media. I mean, we have cruises now, since we've had a couple of incidents that were on video that came to our attention, so we've stepped up our enforcement with unmarked cars, following buses at random. And I know that the officers have issued several citations for people that are failing to stop at the buses. It is extremely dangerous, obviously, and we take it to a very high priority.
Thank you.
I just have one, and thank you. I know that the Police Department has been incredibly responsive to the people that have reported, so thank you for that, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Yeah, okay. First thing is, I was approached by a member of the Town Common Subcommittee who was asking about whether there could be a Town Common Subcommittee, similar to the White Cliffs Subcommittee. Their interest was that, you know, there's so much knowledge in that group, and they've been dealing with residents since two thousand and fourteen, there's a lot of knowledge to impart. So, the question was, could there be a Town Common Subcommittee set up, or could there be a couple of active participants with the current working group, who I think, is it led by DPW and Kathy? I'm not quite sure how the, like, what is the makeup?
Yeah, I mean, maybe it might be helpful if I explain where we are in the process, because I'm not sure that that would make a lot of sense at this point. I mean, we typically form committees when we have building projects or new initiatives, and they're formed by the Board to start to guide a project. This project is done. I mean, I don't think people realize, the funding is in place, the design is done, right now, the engineers are creating the bid documents that will go out for, on the streets, for the contractors to bid on, and then it's construction. Typically, there's very limited any role at offer, a committee at that point, it's being handled by the consultant and the engineers and the architects at that stage. So, the project is basically, at this point, it's done. It's being, going to be constructed in the spring, and I'm not quite sure what committee would be tasked with, frankly.
Well, I guess, I'm guessing, and I've been to the public hearings, that there's some facets that have not been decided upon yet in terms of?
There's a couple of minor finishes for benches and different kinds of pavers.
What about the memorial situation? I know that there was?
That's been, that's locked up.
That's all been?
Yeah, they've worked with, it's been, the consultant and the DPW Director, who's actually double booked tonight, he's downstairs at another meeting, you know, through all of the public meetings and then working with the Legion and the Arsenal family and all the folks that involve, and our Veterans Agent, the final design in terms of the memorial portion of the project is locked up. Everybody, I believe, is very happy with it, and literally, they're talking about, you know, a couple finishes, pavers, and that's it. But at this stage of the project, you know, again, we're just talking about the engineers and the landscape architects putting bid documents together, and then construction oversight, which is nothing that we would ever have a committee doing, so.
So is there not a role, though?
I don't believe there is.
For anyone who, because a lot of these people obviously have been working on this.
Yeah, I know, and it's hard for people to let go once a project kind of, you know, is let loose. They've done a great job, but again, all, it's, the project is basically, it's all done. There's nothing more to decide or to input on, it's done. It's just a matter of putting it out and actually constructing it, which is nothing, again, that we would have a committee overseeing.
Right. Yeah, well, I just, what I don't want is a feeling of disenfranchisement on their part, because obviously, this was sort of a grassroots.
Yeah.
Group of people that came forward with this, and I don't want them to feel that if there is something yet to do, that they can't be looked upon for at least some opinion in terms of working with Scott.
Yeah, they're not a shy group. They'll let you know if they want to provide some input on something, which they've done through the whole process. In fact, we had a couple of specific meetings with that particular stakeholder group in the beginning, just them, to make sure that their input and their thoughts got incorporated. But at this stage, as I said, everybody's happy. The designs have been pretty much blessed all the way through, we presented to the Board, and it's a matter of just getting it constructed at this point.
So, I guess I'm not sure about what the feeling of needing to be involved and is coming from.
I don't see the need for a committee at this stage at all.
If Scott and Kathy have meetings, can a couple of them attend that?
Well, the meetings would be with the consultant, just, and it's, the meetings would be with the consultant to review bid documents, contract documents, things of that nature. Again, it's not really anything that a committee would be involved in.
Can an individual member sit in on that, if they want?
Again, this is, at this point, it's a staff function, we're just constructing the project, so, you know, I'm hesitant to open this up and start doing something differently on this project than we've done on other projects, and really, it's just, at this point, the engineers and the landscape architects putting, you know, putting the documents together to get it wrapped up. If there's need for any more input in terms of finishes or anything like that, then I'm sure the group has gone out to the public, held public hearings, done charrettes, came to this body, you know, if something's necessary, we certainly would be, they've done that all along, so it's not as though there hasn't been opportunities for that group, but community at large to have whatever input they'd like in the project. It's a great project. It's a terrific design, and by all accounts, everybody's thrilled with it, and at this stage, we just want to push it through and get it actually constructed.
And I assume if this decision's been made on finishes or something like that, this group hasn't been dissolved, but they still exist?
Well, again, this isn't a town committee, this is a group that got together, I know we keep referring to them as committee, but they were never formed as a town committee. If they were, they would have had to have posted, you know, agendas and kept minutes and so forth. It's a, it's an interest group that has been very heavily involved in the project all the way through, right up until, you know, right up until the final designs have been, have been blessed, so, again, I just, I don't know what there would be for them to do or why we would do it at this stage of the project. That's my tip.
Julianne?
Well, I actually share the same concerns that Leslie has, because I think that there was, I mean, we have to, we have to acknowledge that this committee got us here, they started the whole project, they got us here, and I'm, I'm kind of, I would like to see all stakeholders, the American Legion, a few of those committee people, maybe a representative from Garden Club, because we may be looking to them for some maintenance issues, that I think it would be a good idea to have an official committee for the Town Common. In addition to that, there will be issues coming up even after it's built with usage hours, maybe more land acquisition, that it could be a temporary committee, but I very much encourage that any citizen participation should be welcomed and kind of made into an official committee.
If I may, obviously, input is always welcome, but at some point, well, you don't want to have a committee and then find work for them. You know, this project is, again, at the, all the way through to the end, at this stage of the game, frankly, if you formed a committee, I don't know what they would do. In terms of, once it's open and operating, then it falls under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectment, that's in part your role, and we discussed, and you know that we are developing a Town Common use policy, and that would be brought before the Board, you would discuss it, you'd hold a public hearing input session if you felt that was appropriate, but that would be under the Board's purview. And then, once it's built, it's managed by the DPW Department, just like every, you know, every other park or public space would be, so. Again, I understand, I recognize the sentiment, and the group has been involved all along, but at this stage, I just don't see, I don't know what we would, what we would do, and, you know, we've got thirty boards and committees, you know, staff time is limited, I wouldn't want to create a Board or Committee and then trying to find work for somebody to do on a project that's basically done.
Well, we already have staff engaged, very engaged, and, you know, when the decisions come up about birch trees versus maple trees, or plastic benches versus wooden benches, you know, I kind of see a lot of decisions being made, and I don't know, should we, should we make a motion? Should we?
Well, if there's more input that would be needed along, if people have that strong of a feeling about which kind of tree, and again, that's why you hire a landscape architect to pick trees that are appropriate for the use and the location and the watering schedules and so forth, but if there is that much controversy over which tree we would plant, we can, you know, we can hold an input session if we felt that that was necessary, but...
Well, I'll give a better example. Someone called me and asked, what is the memorial going to be called? And I did contact Scott, and Scott is working with the American Legion and the Veterans Agent, but I think, you know, that's an issue that is very sensitive and probably worth having a lot of heads.
Well, we look, we look to the federal government and the Veterans Services Department of the state to tell us what that memorial should be called, and they gave us an appropriate name of the Gulf War conflict, if I'm not mistaken, because it contains multiple aspects of the conflict. You don't want to go off and name the conflict by a committee here, you want to defer to how it's appropriately recognized and categorized by the Veterans Services Department, and so that's what we've done. So, working with the Legion and the Arsenal family and the veterans, our Veterans Agent, appropriate liaison to the folks at the state and federal level, that's how that name came about, that's what the conflict is officially called, that's what the memorial will reflect. So, again, I'm not sure what a committee would do in that, we're taking our direction from the, from the Veterans Services in terms of what the conflict should be called.
And I have spoken to different veterans and the Legion people, and they seem to be very happy with the way everything is going.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anybody who isn't happy with it, so.
I mean, at this point in time, I think the Legion and the veterans have given their input as far as that part of it, and I can't see trying to redo that.
Well, you know, I guess we have to think about also moving forward and eventual decisions that will have to be made, and, you know, keeping this, this very energetic group involved.
Jason?
If I could, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Clearly, the substance of this discussion is significant, however, if it's this significant, it probably requires to be posted as an agenda item for a future meeting to be discussed, and an evaluation would have to be made, you know, as to the justification for the committee in terms, as John has said, of what activities or what work that that committee would actually conduct.
Okay.
So, pending that, I'm not going to propose a particular date or anything, I would agree that as far as the construction of the Town Common is concerned, everything is largely buttoned up, everything's largely done, and it's in the hands of the architect and the construction and DPW Department to execute on the plan as it's been designed to this point. I don't think there's anything more we're going to accomplish here tonight in discussing it. It potentially would be a matter for a future agenda item advertised to the public with public input, but not something we're going to be able to resolve here tonight.
A very reasonable suggestion. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jason. Yeah, Leslie?
Yeah. Okay. And I would only make one final statement. I do, I do agree with what you're saying, and I hear what you're saying as well. I just don't want there to be any acrimony between our Board and this particular group, and yeah, it is hard to let go of some things, but I just want to make sure that this group has been working on this for five years, going on five years, doesn't feel in any way that it was not removed from them, but that they really, after a certain point, had absolutely no, no say in it. So I just don't want to have any lingering feelings about that, so, that's the only thing I would say about that.
Okay. I attended the Northborough K-28 School Committee Meeting on January second, and always very interesting meetings. Greg Martno, who is the current Assistant Superintendent, was announced as the Superintendent who will take over effective July first, so, and he's a great person, I've worked with him on many committees and subcommittees and things, and he's, he's great, and I think he'll do a great job. So, congratulations to him. And I guess Scott isn't here, but I did want to thank him and his staff for tree removal at four-twenty Whitney Street. I know there were some trees that were apparently on a wait list, some dead trees that were on a list to be taken down eventually, but this particular resident contacted me saying that she was very afraid of this tree because if it fell, limbs were already falling from it, so she felt that if the tree wasn't removed, that it would fall onto Whitney Street, so they took care of it sooner than she expected even, and so they were very, very happy about that, and I want to thank Scott and his staff for that, that's great. And my last item is, I got a call from a resident on Bartlett Street who said that she has a huge concern about a property that is a couple doors down from her, basically an abandoned property. She thinks it's a trailer, and I know the spot she's referring to, because you can barely see it from the road, it's just kind of shrubs and bushes and trees have taken over, but she's walked up to the building, and all the windows are broken, and she said that there looks like there's some dumping maybe going on around it. So, she wanted me to bring it up and see if it would be possible to get the health inspector or the building inspector out there to take a look at it.
Okay. Do you have an address for it?
It's something thirty, something.
I just would encourage, one thing I would just want to say is, you shouldn't be going up to other people's property to inspect it.
Yeah, right.
That that's known as trespassing, and you could get injured, or somebody might take exception to you being on their property, but...
Yes.
In terms of the property, we would look at it in terms of if it's a, if there's a health issue, or if it is an unsafe structure that would pose a risk, those are two things that we would look at from a Board or Health and Building Inspector standpoint.
Well, I know the building she's referring to, having seen it actually years ago, and it was horrible then.
Is it a trailer or a building?
I think it's a trailer.
Yeah.
And she worries about people going in there, even, you know, using it as a place to sleep, that kind of thing, because she looks, said it looks like it's accessible. So, I just wanted to ask if somebody could?
Sure, if you could just give me the location.
I will, yes.
We'll get, we'll have someone take a look at it, happy to do that.
Okay, it's not in the forties, it's in the thirties, Bartlett, but I'll see what I can find and tell you.
Okay.[1717.13]
It's something thirty...
I just would encourage, one thing I would just want to say is, you shouldn't be going up to other people's property to inspect it. That that's known as trespassing, and you could get injured, or somebody might take exception to you being on their property.
Yes.
But in terms of the property, we would look at it in terms of, if it's a, if there's a health issue, or if it is an unsafe structure that would pose a risk. Those are two things that, that we would look at from a board of health and building inspector standpoint.
Well, I know the building she's referring to, having seen it actually years ago, and it was horrible then.
Is it a trailer or a building?
I think it's a trailer.
Yeah.
Um, and she worries about people going in there, even, you know, using it as a place to sleep, that kind of thing, because she looks, said it looks like it's accessible. So, I just wanted to ask if somebody could...
Sure. If you could just give me the location?
I will, yes.
We'll get, we'll have someone take a look at it. Happy to do that.
Okay. It's not in the forties, it's in the thirties, Bartlett, but I'll see what I can find and tell you.
After the meeting.
Yeah. So, thank you. Then that's my report.
Jason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just three things to mention. Last Tuesday, January 8th, I attended the meeting of the library trustees. And, uh, just wanted to note that Bobby Babcock is resigning from the trustees. He was at his last meeting. Bobby served as the treasurer, I believe, for the trustees, a very significant role considering money that flows through there and, and all the things that he has to take care of. So, we certainly appreciate his service. And, um, if I could ask you, Mitch, we have an opening then on the trustees?
Correct.
So, there's an opening on the board of trustees, if anyone's interested in serving in that capacity. I encourage them to contact the board of the town. Michelle Rehill is the current chair of the trustees. And, uh, I'm sure they can give you some information if you're interested. Um, on Thursday, January 10th, I attended the Master Plan Steering Committee Meeting. The committee is continuing to develop their recommendations for the master plan report, worked through a few items. We have a number of items more. The next meeting of the committee will be January 24th at the library, and the public is welcome to attend. And then finally, I also wanted to, um, to note that we, Town in Northborough had been designated a green community. It's really a very advantageous thing. It will put us on an implementation path for class savings and energy usage. It'll entitle us to apply for and receive grants to support some of the projects we might undertake. So, it's a pretty significant thing. And I just also want to recognize Kim Foster, the Assistant Town Administrator, who I think was the lead on that particular project. So, appreciate it, Kim, all the work involved with that. And that concludes my report.
Okay. The Fire Station Building Committee continues to meet, and they'll meet tomorrow as town meeting approaches. You'll hear more and more about the Fire Station Building Committee and the Fire Station Building Plan. So, so stay tuned. That concludes my report. John?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Public comments?
My name is Joanne Kraus.
Can you go up to the table?
Um, Joanne Kraus, Ten Buck Hill Road. Um, I just wanted to bring to your attention that Trudeby, who, they're, they applied for, uh, to be a hazardous waste company at the end of my street. And, you know, the, the neighborhood, we have thirteen homes with all drinking wells there. We were very concerned about that. They've decided to withdraw their application to the state. And they have, um, filed a closure, a closure application. And I have a cover letter to Sage, the environmental firm, who is going to be closing it for them and managing the project. I just wanted to, um, ask you about this, what this means once they're done and closed, if you still have to worry about another industrial, um, you know, another industrial use happening for that property again, and if you have to keep, you know, keep worrying about that because it's our drinking water that's affected. And, um, it took us a lot of time, the whole neighborhood, to, you know, to get together and try to prevent that from happening. Um, so, does the use, when that, when that building goes away and they're no, they're no longer, um, you know, it's, does that mean that it's no longer zoned for industrial and that they would have to apply for another, um, they would have to go for another zoning?
I think any firm that comes in with a different use is going to have to apply for a zoning board variance or permitting. Um, we do know tomorrow night, actually, this facility is being heard by the zoning board. But, John?
Is it the same facility? This is, um, this is next door to the one for tomorrow night, which is really another reason why I wanted to bring that up here.
Yeah, I'll defer to the fire chief.
So, what happened, the, uh, they no longer, Trudeby no longer has any licenses through the state or through, and they surrendered their license to us. The site assignment for the property is still in place until such time that the Board of Health decides to remove that site assignment. So, but there are no licenses on that site. So, if another company came in, another hazardous hauler, and said, this, the site assignment for here is what we want to do, they still have to go through the licensing process through the board and be approved through it that way. Okay? So, whatever it's zoned, it's zoned. But until such time that that site assignment is revoked, it's still, it's still in place.
So, I thought the site assignment, I thought that's what they applied to the state for, the environment?
What they applied to was to update their site assignment. So, there's a site assignment for that facility. It was established back in eighties? Yeah, it's back in the eighties. Actually, in the seventies, and then updated to the eighties. That site assignment is still a valid site assignment. What they had asked for was to update their license and update their site assignment. That's what they had, they actually never got through it.
They wanted to change it and add a bunch more hazardous...
So, so the current site assignment is still effective, still in place until such time that the town acts on it.
So, that means another, another company like Trudeby can come in and, and...
No, it means, it means another company like Trudeby or another hazardous hauler, and there's lots of them out there, could come in and say, hey, we want to do this. But it really, the closure process is so intense in cleaning that whole site, it would have happened, in my professional opinion, it would have happened already.
Okay.
Because what they're going to have to do is go through and, although all the tanks are gone, they have to, they have to make sure there's nothing under the concrete. They have to make sure, you know, so there's quite a big process. If someone was going to come in and take it over and do that same thing, they would have already made that.
Yeah, I don't...
They would have already made that step. Okay? So, because they haven't made that step, they would have made that step probably within the first, within the twenty-one, twenty-one days from the time that the, uh, Department of, uh...
Environmental...
DEP?
Yes, DEP. They, woo! From the time the DEP said, no, you can't have your license anymore. Okay? So, from the time that that happened, they would have had to do something. Because they haven't done anything. They've submitted their closure. They've already hired, hired someone to come in and do it. I would be very surprised if someone would come in at this point in time and say, oh, no, we want to take it over and do the same thing. Because then they have to go through the whole process of bringing the site up to current standards. And I really wouldn't see that happening. Not saying it's impossible. But what I'm seeing is the site assignment is still in place. I think it's just important to understand that.
Okay. Is there anything we can do about that?
The Board of Health can, I mean, that's something we'd have to check with council with, John.
Yeah, again, I'll circle about it.
It gets very complicated.
But I, we did run this by, because we've been working very closely with DEP on this.
Yes.
And we've been working closely with council. Council's opinion was that there wasn't anything further for us to do, that they're going to close. Once they close, if someone else comes in, it's basically starting from scratch.
And again, they'd have to apply for the licenses. The board would have the appropriate, would have the ability to say, no, we're not going to grant licenses because of ABC or whatever it happens to be. So, there's a lot of stuff. But just, just important to understand that concept, that that's still out there.
So, saying to you, just so you understand that somebody else can come in and apply. There's nothing that says they can't come in and apply. But at the same time, it's going to be a huge step for somebody to try it out and take.
And, and we don't, the town doesn't have to grant them...
No.
The, 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 um, the variance, you go in there.
It's not, it's not a variance. The town doesn't have to grant them the license...
The license.
For the hazardous material, but they have to have good reason.
Isn't it business zone, though?
I have no idea what it is.
It's not industrial zone there. It's business zone west, right?
Whatever the zoning is, the zone, it's not affected, the zoning. It's the, it's this use. I guess, look, the bottom line is, we don't see any duplication of what's there at this point.
I'd be very surprised.
They're out, they're gone. For, for, for all the reasons why they're not pursuing it, nobody else is going to pursue it because it's not going to work.
And as John says, we've been with DEP. We've been, John and I have talked about it a lot. We've talked with council.
We've been working on this for months.
So, we've been staying right on top of it with that, with that idea.
Look, I think it's important to know, because, you know, I know how things sometimes get characterized or they get perceived by the public, is, you know, our jobs protect the information and the process. And so, I know a lot of times, uh, in, in hearings, even individual board members may have a sense of what they think about something or where they'd like to go. But there is a due process that needs to take place. And that means the application comes in, things get heard, questions get asked, information is requested, it gets produced. And I know that's frustrating for the public, who says, why would you allow something like this? Or they want to jump to the answer being no. Uh, and yet, the boards have to hold back because there's, these, these folks have a due process right. And that's what the whole point of the hearing is, to allow them to come in to apply, to allow the board to ask questions, to allow the public to provide input. And then, based on that due process and the information, not just an emotion or a personal feeling, but based on all that information, an appropriate decision gets made. That is then defendable should, should the applicant decide to appeal, or someone decide to litigate against the community. If we jump and we make a prejudicial decision without that due process and going through all those steps, then our decision possibly might not be upheld on the other side. And I know that it's, it's hard for members of the public sometimes to understand or to, to, to accept. And you and I have had an offline conversation. I'm not telling you anything I haven't told you six months ago, that just because the town is entertaining the license or the request, doesn't mean that, that they're in favor of anything.
Right.
But they have a right to ask, and they have a right to due process. And we have a right to ask questions and require them to produce information. And we also have a right to say, no, if that information isn't there, we don't feel comfortable. Now that we're on the other side of this, I can tell you, you know, we've worked very closely with DEP. We never had a warm and fuzzy feeling about this thing necessarily moving forward. But people have to have an opportunity to make the request and to, and to look at the information. So...
Very scary to us.
I understand, but, but, but I hope that you understand and that you appreciate that it worked the way it was supposed to. I know you want, you would want us to make a decision which would be deemed prejudicial.
I just wanted to be back to business zone and not worry about the industrial, I, you know...
But, but again, you know, everything worked the way it was supposed to. The outcome, I think, is appropriate. And, you know, I don't see another use of that nature going in that site. All right?
Now, next door, there's a, a new proposal being put forth, right?
That's your hearing for tomorrow.
That has its own hearing and its own due process. Where you have thoughts on that, you might want to provide them to the appropriate board or committee.
In other words, you don't want me to bring that up now?
We have no input.
Well, listen, I don't mean, I'm not trying to brush you off not to bring it up. But the, this, the other thing that's frustrating for folks is, I know people think that the Board of Selectmen makes all the decisions, but that's not how it works. The board can only act upon things that are appropriate before, things it has jurisdiction over. So, they cannot, you know, make planning board decisions, or ZBA decisions, or Board of Health decisions. Those bodies have their own legal authority and things that, again, are appropriate before them. That's just how it works.
Is that one going before the Board of Health? Because that, you know, that, that, they want to put a construction yard there, and we're really worried about, you know, the runoff of the water. I mean, it was so close to our, our drinking wells, where those properties are, even closer than Trudeby was, they are. I mean, um, is that going before the Board of Health? Because it is a groundwater overlay protected area.
Yeah. Again, I don't want to speak out of turn. I'm not familiar with the application because, again, it's not before this body. And I, and I wouldn't want to speak out of turn. But those are questions you might want to ask of the, of the hearing that's taking place.
Okay, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hearing none. New business. Review of proposed amendment to Mass General Law's Chapter 21H, subsection 7B, agricultural composting. John?
Um, before we start, can I, I have to say something?
Yes.
I have a statement to read. In my capacity as a private citizen, I am one of a number of plaintiffs in litigation against the owner of a composting operation in Northborough. I believe agricultural composting is a general policy issue and a subject in which many residents of the town have an interest similar to mine. However, to avoid any question regarding my participation in the matter of the proposed amendment, I will recuse myself at this time and will not participate in this discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne.
Okay. John?
Sure. So, um, as the board is well aware, we had previously worked through Senator Chandler's office to file, um, what was known as Senate Bill 407 to, to impact and affect agricultural zoning issues that the town was, was dealing with. And the thrust of that, um, legislation was to remove composting, agricultural composting from oversight from the Department of Agricultural Resources and move it to DEP. DEP had one standard, DAR has another standard in terms of these composting operations. Um, we actually were very successful in pleading our case at the legislative level, made it through the House, made it through the Senate, went to conference committee, made it through conference committee, which I think says a lot about the, um, the empathy that the legislators had with regard to the issue that we were struggling with. And unfortunately, at the eleventh hour, it was vetoed by Governor Baker. And I believe it was vetoed by Governor Baker in part because, you know, at that point, there isn't much time to explain. And, uh, and you have two departments, DAR and DEP, that are two sister agencies. And, um, and our proposal was to take something away from one and give it to another to achieve our, our means. The thrust of the, bear with me one second. The thrust of the issue for us is that we believe that what we refer to as commercial composting at a very significant level does not belong in a, in a residential neighborhood. It's not compatible. Just the fact that it takes place on a farm, it shouldn't be exempt from local land use regulations and zoning and Board of Health regulations. That's been the town's position all along. Now, how we accomplish that, it can be done in a number of ways in terms of, of legislation. We have been very active with DAR, who has proposed amendments to their composting regulations. This body has provided written testimony. Every time they come up, DAR still has not issued a final set of composting regulations based upon our input from over two years ago. So, uh, the issues and our concerns continue. So, Senator Chandler's re, office reached out to our office and said, if the town would like to file legislation again, that she would be willing to, to file that and to sponsor it, at least at the Senate level. And so, but she asked us to provide our thoughts. And so, working with town council, we drafted what's in your packet. And there's a couple copies over here, if anybody would like to see what it looks like. And this impacts Mass General Law, it's Chapter 21H, subsection 7B. And this talks about the Department of Food and Agriculture establishing an agricultural composting program. That's the, the section of the legislation. All we have done in our proposal on behalf of the town is to insert the language that says, provided however, that any such rules and regulations shall require that all composting projects and facilities comply with local zoning, land use, conservation, health ordinances, bylaws, and regulations, including but not limited to requirements regarding setback or separation distances, odors, dust, and debris, types and quantities of material and sources of material onsite and offsite. And all such projects and facilities shall comply with such local ordinances, bylaws, and regulations. The fundamental issue for the town from the beginning of all of this is that large-scale composting taking place on agricultural land is automatically exempt from our local land use regulations. Further, the Department of Agricultural Resources, whose responsibility is to oversee these operations and to promulgate rules and regulations pertaining to those, to those operations, they have failed to put any meaningful local input in. And so, what happens is, we have these large-scale solid waste operations appearing in the middle of residential neighborhoods, you know, and what do we hear about setbacks, noise, debris, health, you know, all that stuff. And the town has no legal authority to address this and no legal mechanism by which to address this. And that's fundamentally been the issue that we've dealt with for, for several years now. And so, this proposed change to Mass General Law, which is in the, the enabling legislation, basically inserts, regardless of what the Department of Agricultural Resources does, uh, we take primary deference to the local process and ordinances. And so, I'll, I'll share with you, you know, this is what I would like it to say. And one of the things that we have to, to accept tonight, what's, what I'm going to ask of the board tonight is, A, that you want to pursue this still, and B, that this makes sense to you, what we proposed. And then, C, the part where we all have to sort of take a deep breath is, understanding that this is a, a rather lengthy legislative process. And so, the Senate may make amendments to it, the House may make amendments to it, the conference committee may make amendments to it, and it can get modified all the way up. Our job is to speak, as we have done from the beginning, with one consistent voice regarding our concerns and that those concerns get addressed. The specific wording, I think we're okay with it being changed. If, in the House and the Senate, or council for the House, Senate thinks that something in here isn't, isn't appropriate, or should be worded differently. But the goal and the thrust of what it is that we're seeking, I think is really the spirit of us sending this forward. So, happy to answer any questions about this. This was drafted in conjunction with town council, as you know. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about this. But, but really tonight, I'd just be looking for a motion that you want to do this, that you'd like us to formally ask Senator Chandler's office to file legislation materially, materially similar to what we have here, and, um, and continue to, to pursue this issue.
Thank you, John. And I'm glad Senator Chandler's still involved. And I'm, I'm very pleased to say that we're still going forward pursuing this. Leslie?
Yeah, I agree. This is very exciting to see this.
Yeah, I agree. This is very exciting to see this. And I love the fact that we potentially have an impact like this, with this type of legislation. And I agree with Dawn. I'm glad that Senator Chandler is still involved with this. I like the wording of this. There's only one thing I wanted to ask you about, John. When I see the phrase, including but not limited to.
Yep.
That implies that there could be potentially other things that we could throw in there.
Sure.
Are there other things that, that you're thinking about that we could put in there in terms of detail so that there's no question about what we're looking for?
Well, I, you know, if you look at DAR's regulations, they're, I don't know, I think they're 25 or 30 pages long. They talk about, you know, specifically things that can be brought in for composting and things that cannot be brought in. You know, I don't know all of those, all of those things. I don't know that we, as a, as a body, could, could know those right away. The, the key here is, we know the things that we would like to have input on, setbacks, odor, noise, hours of oper, you know, things that, we know those are the things that are causing conflict because they're not compatible uses in the residential neighborhood. But we also, sitting here, I don't think, could know every possible thing that we'd want to have input on. And so, that language was specifically added in for that, that purpose as we get down the road, that we, we're not, also, we have authority under other legislation or other, or other avenues. We don't want to give that up because we didn't have an exhaustive list here. I think the key here is, we want to make local land use regulations and zoning and, and a process for reasonable input, none of which exists right now at all, to the detriment of our neighborhoods, as we've, we've seen for, for years now. So, so yeah, so it's, it's meant to leave the, the door open. As soon as you start putting in specific things, you either have to put a completely exhaustive list or have language assist or other things. So that wording is by design.
Okay. I just want to ask about that one particular thing. Okay.
Anyone else? Jason?
Yeah, I'm certainly in support of this. I imagine we all are. It's, you know, we, we made a lot of progress in the last effort, and unfortunately, it died at the last possible point in the process. So I'm thankful to Senator Chandler for continuing to pursue this. We certainly will rely on the support of our legislative representatives to try to continue to carry the ball for us at that level to some extent. I did have one question about the wording earlier in the paragraph, which in a couple places, we've inserted the phrase, "in consultation with the Department of Environmental Protection." And I, is that understanding just that DEP would be serving in somewhat of an advisory capacity to assist DAR?
So one of the issues that we uncovered as we started to delve into this composting and the difference between commercial composting, agricultural composting, was that if you were running a commercial composting operation, there was a certain set of rules and regulations. For instance, you had to be 250 feet away from a private drinking well. Well, DAR's regulations didn't say that. So we had a composting operation, a significant composting operation within 50 feet of a private drinking well. And so, that language is inserted to so, to try to ensure that the two sister agencies that oversee composting across the state are conferring with one another in that really, the rules and regulations should be similar. Because, you know, again, in our opinion, as we've stated, there's really no difference between a commercial composting operation that falls under DEP, a one that just happens to be located on farmland, you know, following a completely different set of, you know, regulations. So that's why that, that language is in there.
Thank you.
Leslie?
A question, John. Let's say you, you know, we proceed with this and you, first of all, where does this thing go? And let's say Senator Chandler has some thoughts on it. Will she send it back to us so that we can take a look at it? What's the timeline?
Yeah, here's, so, so the filing deadline is January 18th, which is why it's on your, on your docket this evening. When it comes to filing legislation, once, I think our, our job is to convey, in clear and, and in non-certain terms, the intent and what we're trying to accomplish. And then, as it makes its way through the legislative process, we can provide input, but, you know, they're going to make changes. For instance, in conference committee, when they made changes at the last minute, they're not going to come back and confer with the board. You know, it's, this is, this is their legislation. So our job is, we're asking for something, and we're trying to give clear intent. And then, you know, they may, because it's part of what they're doing is, it's kind of like, you know, the citizen coming up and asking for something, and then they're going to listen to the other side. And more than likely, what you're going to get is potentially some sort of a compromise as it makes through their legislative process, which the board doesn't control. We become a stakeholder of, in, in that process. And as we did with DAR, and as we did with the previous set of, of legislation that we filed, we'll provide testimony about why it is we're asking for what we're asking for and, and justification for that. And hopefully, that will resonate, resonate with the legislators. So, so if your answer is, you know, yes, this is, it's not going to come out the other side and looking exactly like this, and no, they're not going to ask you, you know, for your blessing as it goes through. But we'll have opportunities, as it gets amended, to provide input. But you just have to understand and know going in that it's going to get, more than likely, it'll get modified as it makes its way through, just as the last legislation that we introduced did.
Yeah. And I do understand that. I just didn't know if, it almost sounds like she's willing to work with us in particular, where she would recall you and say, you know, hey, John, what do, what do you think about this kind of thing? Or do you feel that once this gets sent in, that's pretty much the last time we're going to see it until?
No, they'll circle back with us as they did all along. Because in part, see, if you have advocates that, like Senator Chandler, who I can't say enough about her office and how helpful they've been. Because as, as it gets modified, as a, as a legislator who filed it, as it gets modified, they're trying to make a compromise. They're coming back to her office and saying, what do you think about this? What she has done in the past, and I assume she will do in the future, is come back to us and say, is this acceptable? Does this get you what you need, but just different language? And that's, that's the compromise aspect of it. So they'll be continuing back and forth. Again, it's not a, it's not a perfect process, but, but we were amazingly successful in advocating and getting as far along as we did last time. And I think, and again, this is just me speculating, in my personal opinion, is, is that the approach that we took, which was taking it away from DAR and giving it to DEP, created a little conflict between two equivalent sister agencies that fall under one secretariat. And so they, you know, DEP and DAR were going back and forth. This way here, it, it removes it. It puts the on, this is, this is really more of what I had originally proposed and wanted to file the first time. But, you know, there was a concern that it might have been a little too direct about what it was that we were trying to do. And so, again, it's an interesting process. So we'll, we'll stay with it. But, you know, we'll see what comes out the other side. The importance of, you know, I'd love to see this happen, obviously, because this has been a huge, tremendous drain on our resources locally, as you well know. In fact, I probably spent two days on composting issue, two solid days last week on composting and related issues and problems alone. And that's time that I'm not working on the budget. I'm working on other projects. And so it's, it's a tremendous drain on our, on our resources. But I'd love to see this go through, but, you know, we're going to have to see what comes out the other side. It's just, the value of it is, DAR, as I said, has not promulgated their rules and regulations. Okay? We gave very lengthy, detailed testimony about the issues we have with their regulations. By submitting this, we keep the issue on the forefront, and we keep the issue being discussed. So that if we just, in my opinion, if we didn't pursue this and we walked away, it could be perceived by DAR and, and, and the administrative folks that, you know, were, were comfortable with their last best effort at trying to address these issues. And clearly, we are not. I hope that answers your question.
Thanks, John. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to submit the proposed amendment to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 21H, Subsection 7B, agricultural composting to our legislative delegation for review and appropriate action.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All of them in favor. Motion carries in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Okay. Execution of Cemetery Deed 1069.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to execute Cemetery Deed 1069.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All of them in favor. We have the business to come before the board.
Okay.
Executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, collective bargaining and litigation. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, collective bargaining and litigation regarding police officer grievance, Town versus Anza and Town versus City of Marlboro. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Leanne?
Aye.
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll come out of the executive session only to adjourn an open session.